Good afternoon, I'd like to call the January 27, 2015 Richland School District Two Board of Trustees Meeting in Order. I'd like to welcome everyone here on tonight. We have just returned from Executive Session and having discussions there. Thank you for your presence and your attendance. At this time, we will stand and we'll have an inspirational moment by Dr. Cheryl Carson Parker. We will defer the Pledge of Allegiance until a little later because the students doing their student focus and their mock TV show would like to lead us in the pledge. So we'll have the inspirational moment from Dr. Carson Parker and then we will return seated. If you'll stand at this time.
This is a poem and every time I come across it, I think of us as educators and the impact we all have on children. And I've recently come to think of it, a look at this poem, think of us working together as a unified system under addressing issues with students and the challenges we face as a school district. Now, this is not the entire poem, the entire poem would take too long. My favorite parts of it. "There's a road that each one of us travels and each person walks it alone. From the first step we take at the dawning till a distant voice bids us to come home. And each step that we take on that journey shapes the path of the next day to come. For we fashion the road that we travel in the darkness or the light of the sun. And only a few understand it, to only a few it is known, that in smoothing the pathways of others, we fashion our own stepping stones. So when we meet someone whose life has enriched all the lives it has met, we point in our pride to that passage too golden to ever forget." Thank you.
Libby Seedy. Thank you very much. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve for the approval of the agenda.
Sub move.
The move by Ms. Brill.
Second.
A second by Mr. Manning, any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes seven zero, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a quick comment on the...
Mr. Manning? Yes.
I want to applaud the district for our online student registration. I think this has long been kind of a sore point with parents and I see that we're, Tom, continuing to expand the document storage component of that so that we don't have to fill out those forms multiple times and have a central point where all that's stored and done one time if you have multiple students. So I just applaud you guys for continuing to implement that program in the district. Real value add, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sub move, Mr. Chair.
Move by Ms. Brill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Plank, any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes seven zero, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our special recognitions, Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we actually have a number of special recognitions to make this evening, but we want to begin by recognizing our school board. The month of January marks the annual observance of School Board Recognition Month and during this time, we want to make sure that we recognize the hard work of our board. Chairman Chip Jackson, Vice Chair James Manning, Secretary Susan Brill and members, Dr. Cheryl Carson Parker, Dr. Monica Elkins Johnson, Amelia Mackey, and Craig Plank. Just before our meeting this evening, we held our annual School Board Appreciation Dinner with our student leaders and our executive staff and it was really nice to be able to sit back and enjoy some time and let our board members know how much we appreciate the work they do on our behalf. Board members generously provide this important service because they care about our students and our community. They care about each child's education, they care about providing quality facilities and supporting student learning, they care about the next generation and the future of our community and of our state. Our board members roll up their sleeves and get involved. It is a selfless acceptance of responsibility for the educational process that helps all of our children be successful. Board service is truly a work of the heart, which is the theme of School Board Recognition this year. Richland Two Board members take the role of preparing 21st century graduates very seriously. They carry our message to our students, our parents, our employees, and the communities that they very conscientiously serve. They participate in various district functions, school events, community meetings, and they spend countless hours reading, researching, studying materials, carefully developing policies, taking actions, and making decisions for our schools that reflect their high expectations, the values of this community, and what citizens of northeast Columbia want for their children and their schools. Please join me in celebrating School Board Recognition Month in January and take a moment to express your appreciation for the efforts of our school board members. Our district benefits greatly from their service.
And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Libby Roof to make the rest of the special recognitions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We again have the honor of recognizing many of our top students, staff, and schools for their outstanding achievements. Board Member Craig Plank is going to be handing out the certificates tonight and shaking all the hands. And we're going to start with our Summit Parkway Middle School Quiz Whiz team and their coaches. Fatima Jatoy, Esat Jatoy, Aiden Rogers, Benjamin Stone, Odiana Thompson, and coaches Dr. Allison Benoit and Deborah Robinson. While they're making their way up front, I'll tell you, I went to my first Quiz Whiz this year and had a great time, saw a couple of the matches, and I think I was able to answer one of the many questions that I heard, which is not the case for this outstanding group in front of us. We also have Assistant Principal Calvina T. Brown. This is the fifth year that Richland Two has hosted the Middle School Quiz Whiz academic competition. Summit Parkway came out on top, winning all six of their matches plus the championship round, earning at least 200 points each match. A match consists of two 10-minute rounds and can have up to 15 toss-up questions in the areas of literature, science, sports, and math. This is, like I said, the second year that they have won the Quiz Whiz. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Vicki Pascoe from Catawba Trail Elementary School. If you'll come forward along with your principal Denise Barth. As they come forward, I'll tell you that Ms. Pascoe is being honored tonight because she was named the Jerry Shrum Outstanding Educator by the South Carolina Forestry Association. This annual award is given in recognition of outstanding contributions to environmental education in South Carolina through the use of Project Learning Tree. Ms. Pascoe is the K-5 Science Lab teacher and has brought recycling, composting, a nature trail, treasure tree, excuse me, treasure tree, that's a... and much more to Catawba Trail. Congratulations Vicki. Coach Rodney Summers from Westwood High School, would you please come forward with your principal Ralph Smith? Coach Summers is coming up not just for one award, but for three. First, he was named the 4A Upper State Coach of the Year by the State Football Coaches Association. He was honored at the Fellowship of Christian Athletes banquet with the first-ever Art Baker Coach of the Year Award. Then, he received the prestigious title, "South Carolina Football Coach of the Year" by the South Carolina Coaches Association. And when that happened, Coach Summers, my Twitter account blew up. Summers led the Red Hawks to an 11-2 finish this season as well as playoff appearance. Congratulations. We have another award-winning coach in our mix and that is Spring Valley Offensive Coordinator Coach Robin Bacon. Please come forward with your principal Jeff Timoney. Coach Bacon had the honor of being asked to coach at the 11th Annual Max M. Finger All-American Classic Bowl. It was played at the University of Louisiana Lafayette's Regent Cajun Stadium on January 3rd. Players included some of the NFL's top draft picks, 80 elite All-Americans, and the top offensive linemen in the country. And we had a representative right here from Richland Two in South Carolina. Thank you Coach Bacon and congratulations. Killian Elementary Staff is going to be running up here because of the award that they got, recognizes them for encouraging students and staff to be physically healthy and fit. We welcome Principal Dr. Robert Scotland, School Nurse Kim Hanslick, PE Teacher Anna Byrd, and Instructional Aid Veronica Watkins. And as you will see with their beautiful flag, Killian has received the 2014 Let's Move Active Schools National Recognition Award for its outstanding efforts in creating an active school environment. The award celebrates Killian's commitment to helping students learn, focus, and grow through integration of physical activity before, during, and after the school day. Studies show that active kids do better, leading to higher test scores, improved attendance, better behavior in class, and lower rates of childhood obesity. This is part of First Lady Michelle Obama's Let's Move campaign. Congratulations.
Yeah, we didn't get to see it.
Like to see it?
It's so nice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Y'all can sprint back to your seats and show us how active you are. Motivate us all. I'd like to call up North Springs Elementary School Principal David Holcendorf and his staff for winning the South Carolina Safe Routes to School photo contest. The picture you see on the screen is part of a collage that received the most votes from any picture for International Walk to School Day and there were 90 entries. This is the second year for the contest and the second year that North Springs Elementary has won first place. More than that, North Springs is a very active participant in the International Walk to School Day every October, which promotes physical activity, pedestrian safety, and concern for the environment. Congratulations, North Springs Elementary. Now, based on my getting tongue-tied recently, it's a good thing that I'm about to turn the mic over to Dr. Michelle Taylor Brown, Director of Teacher Quality, who will introduce us to our newest and our teachers who renewed their National Board Certification.
Dr. Hamm, Chairman Jackson, and Board Members, good evening. Richland School District Two is pleased to announce 20 teachers earned National Board Certification. A total of 693 district teachers have garnered this prestigious achievement. Overall, Richland Two ranks first in South Carolina and 12th nationally in regards to teachers who have earned this distinction. Richland Two is also pleased to announce 21 teachers earn National Board Certification for a second time. The National Board Certification process is based upon the National Board standards and the five core propositions that help our educators link the teaching standards to their teaching practice. I would like to say congratulations to all of our new National Board Certified Teachers as well as our renewals for having the desire to become lifelong learners. I'm going to call the renewals first and I ask that you hold your applause until we complete those names. From Bethel Hanbury, we have Yvette Addison. From Bookman Road Elementary, Tammy Altman. Joseph Keels Elementary, Alice Wofford. Lake Carolina Lower Elementary, Sandra Owens. Lake Carolina Upper Elementary, Ara Klein. Langford Elementary, James Reeves. Rice Creek Elementary, Deborah Holland. Windsor Elementary, Virginia Boney and Katherine Griggs. Blythewood Middle, Wendy Sherman. Kelly Mill Middle, Jacqueline Jacobs. Longleaf Middle, Richard Fish. Summit Middle, Janice Hedgepad. Blythewood High, Charlene Drakeford. Ridgeview High, Kirk Stigelbauer. Spring Valley High, Chet Frye and Gloria Hamm. Westwood High, Alicia Lewis and Dawn Paradise. Let's please give them a round of applause. For our new National Board Certified Teachers, we have from Spears Creek Child Development Center at Bridge Creek, Amy Hinks. From Bridge Creek Elementary, Elizabeth Robish. Catawba Trail, Ryan Pearson and Nicole Lucky. Center for Knowledge, Augusta Green. Forest Lake Elementary, Amber Goff. Langford Elementary, Samantha Butler. Lonnie B. Nelson, Tiffany Hawthorne. Pontiac Elementary, Elizabeth Jackson. Roundtop Elementary, Jill Lee. Eel Wright Middle, Shayna Barber. Muller Road Middle, Victoria Casper and Alana Weigel. Blythewood High, Sandra Dietl. Gratinianna Ugro and Meredith Blocker. Ridgeview High, Lane Laney and Chris Nostrup. And Spring Valley High, Jason Allridge and Tiffany Broome. Let's give them all a round of applause.
Either Summer Hill or Brighton and just tell them you have to.
Oh, you have to?
You have to, it's the same money.
That was a little too quick. They should have come out one at a time and called their names.
As folks are leaving, we're going to continue our board meeting. Thank you so much for being here and congratulations again to all of the National Board Teachers for the first time as well as those who have renewed that credential. Great job. At this time, the Chair will allow Board Member Mrs. Brill for a point of personal privilege. Mrs. Brill.
Yes, I'd like to introduce my sister, Anna Gottlieb. Will you stand? She's a speech pathologist with Richland Two, is it 28 years? How many?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six. I was almost right. And she's at Windsor and she was at Keels previously and she absolutely loves it. So thank you, Mrs. Elliott.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Next on our agenda is our student focus. Dr. Hamm?
Speaking of Mrs. Elliott, I'd like to introduce Beth Elliott, who is the principal here and shall introduce the student focus for us.
Good evening. I'm going to let the students introduce our student focus for tonight and so we're going to turn it over to the students. So just enjoy a few minutes of us showing you a daily practice of what goes on here at Windsor Elementary.
Places, everyone. Windsor Live will be starting in 30 seconds. This is the special edition. Places, everyone. Good evening, Windsor Wildcats. My name is Melina Santana along with...
Marisa Clark.
And...
Jewel Jane.
And...
Laquais Hamilton.
Will everyone please stand and join us in doing the Pledge of Allegiance? Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all. Now in Spanish. You may now be seated. Back to you guys. Thank you, Marisa, Laquais, Jewel, and Melina. Good evening, Windsor Wildcats. My name is Zella Jackson with tomorrow's lunch choices. Tomorrow's lunch choices are: Line one, broccoli Alfredo. Line two, chicken sandwiches. Line three, crispy chicken wrap. And line four, a fresh garden salad. Fresh fruit is always a good choice. And don't forget your milk. Now to Taylor for our word of the day. Thank you, Zella. The word of the day is applause. Approval or praise expressed by clapping. Since this is the evening of our board appreciation, we would like to give a special applause to our Richland Two Board of Trustees. Now for our Learn, Profile, and Attitude of the Day. Open-minded. You don't get harmony when everyone sings the same note. Since this is the evening, excuse me. So we are thankful that you, as a board, give our awesome teachers time to collaborate and plan together. Did you hear about the group of Windsor teachers who are reading and discussing "The Book Whisper"? Talk about enthusiasm. Our Windsor teachers enjoy learning as much as teaching. Now for our birthdays. A special happy birthday wish goes out to all of our January birthdays. Now to Mr. Gadsden, Ms. Creel, and Ms. Elliott.
Thank you, guys. Well, good evening, Mr. Gadsden and Mrs. Creel. What a nice evening it's been. And we're off to just a great week and looking forward to all the wonderful things here at Windsor. Mr. Gadsden, do you have some announcements for us tonight?
I sure do. First, we want to compliment our bus riders. They're doing such an excellent job with the bus procedures. And as we have been discussing on Windsor Live, boys and girls, don't forget our safety reminder. Make sure that you walk directly home as well as walk in groups. Now, an update on our book club. Mrs. Creel, do you have a date in time for our next meeting?
Yes, I sure do, Mr. Gadsden. Teachers, we look forward to seeing you at our after-school book club. We're going to meet on Monday, February the 9th at 5 o'clock. And remember, our book study is a leader in me. We'll be reviewing chapters nine and 10. How do we have coats? Boys and girls, don't forget to check our lost and found for any misplaced items. Labeling your coats and jackets with your name helps us so much.
Thank you, guys. And, boys and girls, remember what we talk about every morning on the Windsor Show. Remember, if you think about everything you say and do and think about your choices and remember that golden rule here at Windsor, if you wouldn't say it or do it in front of Mr. Gadsden, Mrs. Creel, or Mrs. Elliott, then it's not done at school. So make those good choices and have a great week. Okay, guys, you ready? All right, let's send it back. Back to you guys.
Now for our special recognition. To all of our National Board Certified Teachers, a special salute. We know that teachers are learners and thinkers and we hear you had a lot of homework with your National Board Certification, so congratulations. Hey, Ms. Boney, hey, Ms. Griggs. And now...
Technical difficulties. We all have technical difficulties. Every single week, we have some technical difficulties in our life. But what we have learned is we've learned to work together. We have learned to share and we've learned on our morning news show, it's a great way to communicate. It is the real thing here at Windsor Elementary to cultivate a learning environment. What we've learned is that sometimes we have to freeze in time and think about what we're doing. But as we work together, teachers, students, and administrators, it is the real thing. The "we" Windsor Elementary is our home. We are the real thing. Standing hand in hand and working on that perfect harmony. While our state survey is built to be very, very positive and we're very proud of our school rating going from F to C, but we're the most proud as ever. Here we go, and we do each day. Windsor is right up in all the time with a very supportive community and keeping company with a talented faculty and staff. And of course, we've got the best student body. Through our day, we are learning together how we can communicate internationally and what we can do to make a difference not only here but worldwide. Coke has nothing on Windsor Elementary. Windsor has taken a variety of small bundles and put them together to truly make a difference. We are the real thing.
Back on air. Okay, that was close. Okay, people, we're back. Box tops. Box tops, box tops, don't forget your box tops. And now for our school pledge. I will work hard, I will be kind and be safe, I will practice actively in my classroom, I will dress success by being tucked all the way around, I will fill someone's bucket and have a wonderful Wildcat day. This concludes this evening's special edition of Windsor Live. That's a wrap.
And just to show a little bit of our marketing practices, the students are giving a gift to all of our board members along with Dr. Hamm and it is something we're going to send off to Coke. It's a variety of the small drinks that we packaged together to show that working together, all different, but to produce that total package. So again, thank you to the Richland Two Board and to Dr. Hamm. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Elliott and your staff, faculty and staff, and especially the students in your Wildcat broadcast. Great job.
Excellent.
Very unique way of doing a student focus as well. At this time, we'll have our public participation. No one signed up to speak to the board, however, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the board at this time, you can feel free to do so. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we'll be voting on the Executive Session items. The Chair will entertain a motion. Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Chair, I move that we address items concerning students 1 through 8 while leaving out item number 3 to be voted upon separately. The board recommendations are as follows. The board recommendations are as follows. Student number one, Blithe Wood Academy with Luraydak. Number two, Blithe Wood Academy. Number four, Blithe Wood Academy. Number five, Anna Boyd. Number six, Anna Boyd. Number seven, Anna Boyd. Number eight, Blackwood Academy.
Heard the motion from Smackey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion on the next student, Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Chair, I move that student number three be placed at Blithe Wood Academy.
Motion by Ms. Mackey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes 4-3. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the old business action requested. Approval of the board budget priorities. Dr. Hamm.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for getting us the information requested about your priorities. And Dr. Miley is going to present this item for us and the next two items in addition to this. That's the Dr. Harry Miley show for a bit.
Thank you. We had, you have hard copies of the priorities submitted by the board members. I apologize for getting this to you at such late time and not in the doc package earlier. But these are all, I wanted to wait until we had all the priorities from all the board members. So I have listed all the priorities. You'll see each one on each page, multiple pages of the priorities from each board member. I did take a little time and look through them and try to pick out some common threads. And you'll see those on that first page. It's not exactly a summary, and it's not necessarily in priority order. But they were just some common themes as I went through all of the board members' priorities, such as maintaining levels to ensure, funding levels to ensure low student teacher ratios. Foreign languages taught in elementary schools was frequently mentioned. Parity and equitable allocation of resources across all facilities and sites in the district. Expand the number of K, 4K classes in the district. Continued support of our teachers with the National Board Certification. Develop a strategic strategy to reduce the amount of 8% funding that we request each year. Increased support, especially assistance for classrooms and teachers with special needs students. And this was mentioned several times, was adhere to our board policy of a 15% fund balance. Provide additional buses to avoid overcrowding on school buses and ensuring that our students are riding on safe buses. Retain school resource officers in all schools. And finally, and certainly not least, and not last, but I guess it is last, but it's not least, was listen to the community. That was frequently mentioned in terms of reaching out and making sure that we are listening to the community, giving opportunities for input from the community, and focusing on challenges regarding diversity. Again, I apologize for such short time to review these, but these are the priorities submitted to us by the board.
Questions or comments on the board. Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Mr. Chair, I have one comment.
Dr. Johnson.
As I look over, I know we didn't have an opportunity to go back and review. And I just want to make it known for the record that although you combined what we sent to you earlier for the common themes, I am still holding true to the fact that I do want to see more K programs. I know that wasn't the top 11 on the list, but I want to make it known, being a formal K teacher, that it's very important that we take care of all of our students because not every student is going to college. So we need to make sure we take care of all of the students in our school community. So I'm going to make sure I continue to push for K programs, and especially in our R2I2 program. And I'm going to encourage teachers and the community to come out and push for those K programs because we do know, and being an educator, I do understand that not all of our students are going to college. But we need to make sure that we prepare them for the work world. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Other questions or comments on the board? Dr. Miley, let me be clear, sort of somewhat following up with Dr. Johnson, but making sure that I'm clear. The common themes in no way impact the priorities that we've identified under our individual priorities.
Absolutely. I just thought I would just briefly, if you, since I was handing them out at the last minute, give you my interpretation of some of the common themes. But we listed all of the priorities submitted by all the board members. Yes.
Thank you. I just want to be clear and just reinforce what Dr. Johnson said, that it's just summation of what you interpreted. But the individual areas that are expressed as priorities still remain priorities and will be considered as we develop the next budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
One last question. And I do, I take blame. I did not get you my priorities until late today. So, but we will post this correct so that everybody, the public can see our priorities. Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much, Dr. Miley.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, under new business new action requested, the bond refunding resolution. Dr. Miley?
Yes, thank you. I've asked Franny Heiser from the McNair Law Firm to join us tonight. And she's right here to help us answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Miley. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's great to be with y'all tonight. I've seen a number of y'all for a number of years and want to say hello to the new board members. My name is Franny Heiser. I'm with the McNair Law Firm. I've had the privilege of helping the school district borrow money for most of the last 20-plus years. And I always like to be here when I can say that we're gonna save you money instead of costing you money. And so the resolution that you have tonight does two things. One is to authorize the refinancing or refunding of two bond issues, one from 2008 and one from 2009. And the financial advisors estimate that the savings from those two refinancings will be approximately $2.5 million. And that's real money, and it will go to the benefit of your taxpayers and the needs of the school district. We've also got in the resolution authorizing borrowing your annual 8% bond issue if not to exceed $10 million. You very often do your 8% separately, but we think that if you bring those two borrowings together, that you not only will save on efficiency and cost of issuance, but by having a larger bond issue, we think that you'll actually attract even a lower interest rate on your annual 8% bond issue. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. Mike Gallagher of Compass Municipal Advisors has worked closely with Dr. Miley and the administration to make this recommendation. And Mr. Gallagher couldn't be here tonight, but he has shared with me his numbers. I've worked with Mike for a number of years. And if you do have any questions, either on the legal aspect of the resolution or on the numbers, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions. Question number one, does this extend the payback period or is it still the same?
It's not gonna extend the payback period. It'll still be the same. There is some restructuring of the debt, but not in a way that would extend the repayment.
I know that in the investment world, bonds have kind of really been on the decline and been struggling as far as municipal bonds and the bonds that we issue. Are they still in good shape for sale?
Right now, they are sizzling hot.
Sizzling hot. Excellent.
The financial guys would say that really in the last six or eight weeks, that indicators from Europe as well as continuing indicators from the United States have made municipal bonds a very attractive investment. Your bonds won't go to market for about four to six weeks, but in today's numbers, your 8% piece would be about a 1% true interest. And on the two refundings, you'll reduce each of those by at least two percentage points on your interest rate. So for bond sellers, it's a really good time. For bond investors, you're just getting a very, very tiny little bit of interest. But this is a very good time to be in the market.
Yeah, I see that in my 401K. Not so good right now. The last thing is with the 8% refunding, that I assume that that doesn't affect this current year since we haven't made a decision on 8% funds yet, or it does?
Authorize that.
Authorize it. Okay, because I saw some numbers in here. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't reflective of something we hadn't made a decision on.
No, the, this would be the official board action and is, is really always the case, when we bring you a resolution, you're delegating to the superintendent the decision as to exactly how much is borrowed when. And your superintendent would depend on the board for that authorization. So really, all you're doing is getting this vote out of the way, and then we wait until we get the exact numbers from y'all through your administration. So there won't be any surprises.
Last question, and I'll let it go. Does this improve, decrease, or maintain our AAA credit rating?
This will not have a negative impact on your credit rating. The taking advantage of refunding opportunities is always a positive, as is the long-time commitment of this board to your reserve fund and your overall fiscal conservatism. So I would be totally shocked if there was any negative impact on your bond rating. When you get as high as y'all are with your rating, it's incrementally harder to keep going up. But you're in such good shape now that y'all should be very pleased with that. And I don't think I'd ever be in front of y'all recommending you do something that would damage that credit rating without making sure that y'all knew what was going on. So this should be a real positive.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the board? Franny, we are in a position now that we're expecting, unfortunately, we're not gonna vote tonight. So this will delay your process to go to market by how much time. When do you anticipate that's gonna be able to happen?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have the ability to get some of the paperwork done in anticipation. And having worked with y'all so long, we've got access to that information. So I really don't think that your process to vote at your next meeting will slow things down.
We hope the market stays the same as well.
The, I've been, I've been to a couple of meetings recently with the Compass guys, and they're saying that they don't see any significant change for at least the next maybe quarter. So we've got some time, and we will meet whatever schedule y'all are comfortable with.
Thank you so much. Other questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Certainly.
As I look at the capital improvements, I just have a question about the playground equipment. I'll just use one for an example. Are we discussing?
That's gonna be our next one, Dr. Johnson?
Next one, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Just a second, but, yeah.
I can wait for that. Thank you.
But thank you. I'll make sure we call you. Other questions, comments, or on this one? Okay, thank you very much. Now, next on the agenda is our proposed 8% funding, which is where you were gonna go, Dr. Johnson. Is there anything you need to say on that, Dr. Miley? Or do we want to utilize that time? Because a number of us probably have questions regarding that, so.
We, we, you have it in your packet, and we also put it up on the screen if needed. Mr. Carter and Mr. Cramner are here to answer any specific questions about any specific product, projects. So I defer to you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll defer to you, Dr. Johnson, to start us off.
Okay, thank you. As I was looking at some of the schools, I noticed that we want to repair some playground equipment and add some. And I was just curious as to the price. For an example, we'll just use Rice Creek as an example. It says playground equipment, and it says repairs for $17,800. What type of repairs are we doing? Am I looking at that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. The, first of all, we hired an outside consultant to evaluate every one of our playgrounds in the district. And we have a thick book with recommendations. So last year, we funded anything that they considered immediate. And so, like for instance, Forest Lake has got pretty large number. They've got a lot of equipment. No individual pieces in really bad shape, but a lot of it needs recapped and just fixed up. The piece at Bryce Creek is actually the track. That, you know, we put a walking track around the back of the playground, and just over time, it's just gotten damaged. We brought in the team that does our playground, I'm sorry, our rubber surfaces. And they measured the area. They gave us the precise number we would need to repair the track.
So can we go back and make that correction and say a track instead of playground repairs? Because I noticed with some of the other schools, we have add K2 playground equipment, and that's $2,200. So I just want to be clear on the discrepancy between the prices at different schools.
I can do that. We just group all of the stuff that's playground-related under the title playground. I'll just expand the explanation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Other questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I know that we've been getting Riju updates and looking at the work this year. I didn't see Riju on the list.
They have $1.9 million from you this year.
They're not, that's not out of 8%.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I know that that's not out of 8%. So I, but I guess I was thinking maybe if there was something that we could get out of 8% to help that situation. So I just, it seems like, yeah, we're giving them 1.9, but then we don't give them an opportunity for anything out of 8% money for other needs that they may have?
I get $5 million, so I'm trying to spread it over all 40 schools. And since I had 1.9 million there, I can address needs there next year.
Other questions or comments on the board? I'm quite a few, so I didn't want to start on mine. Anybody else have anything else they want to say? Okay, I'll start. The first question, I guess my concern is a general concern. That is, I notice in here, we're doing A&E designs for media center upgrades. Yes, sir. And the problem I have with that is that also in this document is the Summit Park Middle School's media upgrade and the note being made that we approved the A&E design last year. And so I'm just, I want the board to be aware that by okaying the A&E design, you're basically saying whatever the design comes back with in terms of funding the project, it almost catches us. Because I can't see me now not funding the project this year that we approved the design to look at last year. But not knowing what the cost was gonna be until now, it puts me in a very awkward position. There are several schools on this list that are having an A&E design done this year. So next year is gonna automatically, they're gonna automatically assume that based upon that estimate from that design, it's gonna be a fated complete. And that's my struggle. When I saw the Summit Park and the reference being made to last year's approvals of the design, I don't interpret that as a carte blanche approval of the design, meaning approval of the, of the actual implementation of it.
And naughty wife. But the reason I do it that way is in order to get, these are all summer projects. So it takes a while to go in and do the design. I could go back and get a price to do the whole thing and just defer to you and give you the whole number. But that puts the actual modification, if you choose to do it, off for another year. So what we try to do is fund the design, and then we will give you a proposal to actually do the work. We can do the work. We can defer the work. The two elementary schools will not be anywhere close to what the number is for a middle school or a high school. But that's the way we've been doing it, is trying to get the design in place so we'll know what the real number is.
And I'm not questioning that. I guess I, my concern was in approving the design fee, it's very difficult now to come back and say, but I don't want to approve the actual work that the design fee presented, although I'm just seeing that during this round for the first time. It would be beneficial to me to know that cost, and if that means a little bit of the delay, then it means a little bit of the delay. The other issue is, do we have a carpet replacement schedule? Because I noticed a, it literally looks like almost every elementary school and maybe middle are having their carpets replaced at the same time. And I know they could have all been put in at the same time. So how does that happen?
We try to do them every five years unless we have issues. You know, if we have carpet that gets damaged. Each classroom, each 800-square-foot classroom costs about $3,500. Some are a little less, some are a little more because not all of them are exactly 800 square feet. We also do it in classroom equivalent. So if we have an administrative area, we attempt to convert that to 800-square-foot increments so I can put a number on it. That's, you know, 10 years ago, it cost us $3,000. It's now it's up to $5,000. And it really doesn't make any difference whether it's carpet or tile. Because with tile, the labor is more, but the material is less. With carpet, you have more in the cost of the material and less in the labor because it's easier to put down. But we track it. The schools ask for it, and we don't give, believe me, if I did all that they wanted in here, we'd have spent $5 million just on carpet this year. But we are trying to especially keep upfront areas, high-visibility areas in classrooms where we.
Which really leads to my next question, Jack, and I'm glad you said that to others, but I was gonna ask about that as well. It would be good if you're, if you're doing that to maybe share with the board, not this time, but in the future, sort of what your requested list is versus what you're presenting to the board. list is versus what you're presenting to the board. Because I'm in the impression that everything that everybody requested is now what we're looking at voting on, up or down.
What I do is, in October, I send out a message to all the principals, and I request their top three priorities, whatever it is that's the most important to them. I said, you can list whatever you want to, but seldom do we get past the top three unless it's some emergency that we know we need. So I've got them eight pages long. And I try to get back to principals. I honestly bet I don't get back to all of them. I do go back and ask some questions. Mr. Gucci was here earlier. We'll go out and look at carpet. We do have our painter goes through the schools. We have a pretty good feeling on paint. We sometimes will phase carpet if they ask for. 30 classrooms, we may do 10 or 15 one year, and a second phase the next year. So I do that in an attempt to address as many needs and wants as I can.
The other question is, I noticed at North Springs, they have a $261,000 need for a fire alarm replacement.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us about that?
Yes, the existing building had an old fire alarm system. We put in a new fire alarm. The building is safe from a standpoint of both fire alarms work, but they operate independent of each other. So if you, in the new section that has the newer fire alarm, it ties in, but is not linked so that it sets the other one off. So this would put all of the fire alarm in the building on one system. And they are expensive.
I noticed that Richland Northeast, with all, sort of picking back on the question Mr. Manning asked as it relates to Ridgeview, with the beautiful renovations and all the work and money we spent there just a few years ago, that their request this year is for $750,000, of which almost $600,000 is for the astroturf field.
Yes, sir. Let me go back down to Northeast. Yeah, $590,000 of it is the artificial field.
How many more high schools would we have left to do artificial turf fields, once we've done Ridgeview this year and Richland Northeast next year?
Three more, and my proposal would be to do one a year, or depending on what we do in '16 on a referendum, put one or two in a referendum.
Other question. On the HVAC, this is at the district level, you have listed HVAC, plumbing, electrical upgrades, $500,000. Is that for the district building, or where is that?
No, no, no. That's for replacement of units throughout the district. That's replacing toilets, water fountains.
In schools?
In schools, yes, sir. All of that goes to schools.
And why wouldn't the schools have requested that?
They don't know when units are going to break. They don't know when toilets are going to break. We get work orders in all the time that we have a broken toilet or something. We use that money to go fix things that are.
So is this number based upon your estimate of what needs to be done, what you're projecting will need to be done in the future?
Yes, sir. That's a pretty solid number. That's about what we spent every year for the last three or four years. When you get up to 40 schools, it doesn't take long to replace toilets and air conditioners, to use up $500,000. And anything I don't use, Mr. Miley takes eventually.
I noticed that they're asking for a painting of the interior of the Rogers Center for, I guess, $25,000. But they're asking for a painting of just the interior, second floor of Spring Valley High School for $62,000. It's just struck me odd that to paint an entire building is almost a third the cost of painting an upstairs floor.
It's actually the second and third floor, and it's all hallways.
Okay. It just said second in the report here, though.
I'm sorry. It's second and third floor. We did the first floor last year. It's a very large building.
I noticed we asked for radios in a lot of different places, in three different places. We asked for radios under the enhancing security. We asked for radios under the security equipment, and then we asked for bus radios under the category of other. Why are we spreading requests for radios out over three different areas?
Well, the radios for security are different than radios for the buses. And what's happening is, the systems are all going digital, and we have radios in a couple of years that will not be usable anymore. So we're trying to get them all swapped out. And we ask for them under.
Security equipment.
Security equipment.
Mm-hmm. Next to the last page.
Yeah, we're replacing some obsolete radios there. We also have some radios that are not digital, and we're trying to switch them over to digital, and we're trying to get the buses all on digital radios as well. So I can lump them all together, but they're different kinds of radios.
I understand the bus, but I was wondering about the other two, under the security, enhancing security and security equipment.
In enhancing security, we're not actually, and I probably should just take that radio. We're not actually asking for radios under that line. That's for the keypads, where we've gone away from the punch-in keypads to the card readers. We'll eventually get to every exterior door on schools. We'll have a card reader. We're just not there yet. We're trying to do that in phases. And then lobby guards that need to be replaced. Most of our original ones are now obsolete, and we can't maintain anymore.
Mr. Miley, is there, instead of having to borrow this amount of money, is there any way that the additional funds that we're going to probably end up getting from the county above and beyond, would we ask that our budget could be used in lower this funding request, a borrowing request?
We anticipate extra revenues this year.
Yes and no. What we recommend is that we would do that next year at a bun-fund balance, and that way, we could reduce the borrowing for next year. This year, we don't have that money in the bank yet. We anticipate it, and I think that'd be a wise use of those funds for next year.
Other questions, comments, and board? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I want to go back to the field at R&amp;E. How do we pick R&amp;E for that field versus some of our?
Second oldest field.
So that's not the field we just replaced, that main field?
R&amp;E?
Yeah. I mean, the football field, right? Didn't we just get all that regraded and redone?
Several years ago, we went in and regraded it.
How long has several?
Two or three years.
I was going to say, I thought it was fairly recent. So I mean, it may be one of our older fields, but I know we just did a lot of work to it.
Well, we really do, on our main on-campus competition fields, we regrade those every year. And in fact, we're doing one here in the next couple of weeks where we go in and put sand. They just get beat up. You know, if you think in terms of, one of the reasons we're doing Ridgeview is they play so much on that field. It's the same thing at Richland Northeast. It's the same thing at Blackwood. It's the same thing. Well, Spring Valley's a little different animal, because they play their JVMB squad in the stadium. So their field doesn't take quite the same beating as the other high schools. So the goal was to, at least on those on-field competition, to replace them over time. And we can defer that. One of the things that Mr. Jackson asked us about is, when we got the bid on Ridgeview, would they do another field at that same price? We asked him that. They said yes. So that's why this number is.
I just have a little bit of pause about that number, especially, you know, and, you know, I mean, I was a big advocate for the work we did at R&amp;E, you know, fully support the work at all of our schools. But I feel like, you know, when we worked on R&amp;E, we really focused on that. We use 8% money. We use different money. And I feel like with, you know, that Ridgeview deserves that same attention to some of the things that we're working on there. So I don't want to say not to do this at R&amp;E, but I just wonder, could we use that money for some other things at Ridgeview right now while we're focusing on that school and come back to R&amp;E at either another time or with the bond referendum?
They're going to actually start the installation of the turf at Ridgeview Friday.
I understand. But I mean, I understand we have some work already going on there. I'm wondering, if we were to take that money to some of the work at Ridgeview that we didn't fund, what could that fund at Ridgeview out of that priority list, if anything?
I'd have to go back and look at what we didn't fund. I think we hit all their big projects. Now, there's some stuff that are more referendum stuff, like building a back house for the auditorium, if that's the way we choose to go. But that's a much bigger number than $590,000.
So are you saying that $600,000 couldn't fund any of the other work that he's done at R&amp;E?
I'm sure we could go back and.
I mean, at Ridgeview, I'm sorry.
I'm sure we could go back and find stuff to fund there. But the big projects, where the, I think their next big round of real needs, you know, in that $1.9 million you all allocated, we are doing a cosmetic upgrade to the seating area of the auditorium, to really address their auditorium and get it to be the equivalent of what our newer auditoriums are with scene, with real scene shop. Now, they've got some space. If you look at their plans, it says it's a scene shop. It's not big enough. It's got some dressing rooms to really add on to it. You're talking millions of dollars, not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I don't want to take, I mean, I hate to, it's a little bit awkward, I mean, because I'm not trying to put one school down to do another. I just feel like we really put forth that effort to focus on that one area. When we did R&amp;E, I'd like to give Ridgeview that same attention. If there's something we could do with those dollars at Ridgeview that would be meaningful, I would like to see, have the opportunity to see what that might be, as opposed to the field at R&amp;E at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. I also want to reiterate that. And when I raised the issue, I remember distinctively when we made the commitment, I along with you, Mr. Manning, made the commitment to R&amp;E a few years ago. We pulled from 8% money each year for R&amp;E. We didn't just pull it one year, and the next year said we're not going to give them any, because we gave them a lump sum. We pulled, as a matter of fact, I remember the vote Dr. Fleming made us take, saying he would only commit to doing it if there was money available. So that's not a really good answer for me, to say we're giving them 1.9 million, so they get no 8%, because we got 8% every year for R&amp;E until we finish that project. So I just want to record saying that. Ms. Mackey?
I have a question. With regard to, I guess I've got a question as to how all of the, how all the priorities, what input did the schools have as to how the priorities are derived? For instance, with R&amp;E, did they ask for the turf? I know I've heard about, I've gotten some emails about.
They all asked for the turf. All five high schools, yeah.
Okay. I know they've gotten some, I've gotten some emails about awning and things like that. How do we determine, so the turf is something that you said all the schools have asked for?
Yes, ma'am. All the athletic directors, all the principals.
They all asked for that. Okay. I'd love to, at some other time and not, you know, belabor the point in open session, I would love to sit down and sit and talk about our big picture. I know Spring Valley is the oldest high school in the district. It was strategically and systematically upgraded to the point where it was rebuilt. It is in great condition. It was done in phases. I know R&amp;E has had some phase work. For instance, with the Ridgeview, I know we've gone through a list of priorities. Some of the priorities on that list were things that was told that they were going to have. Some of the stuff was asked for, their input. Other stuff was just things that were told they were going to have. I'd love to sit down at some time and have a conversation and talk about the big picture and where we're going. You're looking at a school that was built for $10 million, Ridgeview, versus our newest school that was built for $70 million. So there are some patches that you're just simply not going to do, as has been stated in open session, you know, as recently as last year. So I'd love to be able to sit down and talk about where we're going with the big picture, and just make sure that everything on the list is that students, is what schools have asked for. Turf is great, but you're looking at, you know, two schools, too, that will not be able, are not at this time able to play a varsity game there. It makes the current condition much better, great, but they're still not able to have some of their bigger issues addressed. So I'd love to be able to talk.
Again, stadiums are, we do have numbers in the tenure facility plan on stadiums. We're talking six to $10 million.
No, they couldn't do that. They said that they flat-out couldn't do it at Ridgeview, is what we're told. So just some time, and we can sit and chat about our big picture.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. I appreciate that very much. Other questions and comments on the board? Thank you very much, Dr. Miley, Ms. Carter.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our communications audit. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Libby Roof will present that. One of the areas that we had said we would address as a school district was sort of the positioning, marketing, communications, et cetera, that the district has. That was one of those nine priority areas, and a first step for that is a communications audit.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Board members and community members and guests, the Richland Two Communications Office has taken initial steps to implement a communications audit for the district. The Communications and Strategic Partnerships Office has many effective plans, strategies, and communication vehicles in place. For example, we have some great marketing plans that many of you probably have seen in place with promoting our STEAM and IB programs, and those are funded through grants and headed up by Dr. Teresa Riley Stevens. We have a dedicated cable television channel, supported by social media and our website, headed by our communications coordinator, Joe Burke, and his team, who are sitting here taping this meeting and going to air it for us a little later. And we have our community engagement campaign, U&amp;2, headed by Director of Strategic Partnerships, Martha Jones. Critical to ensuring those individual pieces meet the communication needs of our rapidly growing and changing district is a comprehensive communications plan. Developing an effective plan relies on research, and that is what a communications audit delivers, including assessment of the effectiveness of our current strategies, identifying our strengths, weaknesses, and communication gaps, and recommending proven, cost-effective tactics for achieving communication goals. The communication process is outlined for you on the screen. Three companies expressed interest in conducting an audit when we advertised the requests for proposals. In the end, one organization submitted a successful response, and that was the National School Public Relations Association, which has been in existence since 1935 for a single purpose, and that is to build support and trust for education through responsible communication with parents, staff, and community members. They began their, conducting communications audits in their early 1980s and have worked with more than 150 school districts, education associations, and agencies. The auditors that we are working with are very talented, very skilled, experienced people, and they include Karen Klein, Associate Director for the association, with over 30 years' experience in public relations, and has worked with INSPIRA since 1998. Tim Carroll will be our lead auditor, and will be coming to the district in March. He has more than 30 years in school public relations experience, working for school districts in Texas and Indiana. Stephanie Bateman will be coming with him, and she is retired Director of Communications for the Jefferson County Public School System in Louisville, Kentucky, and has 33 years of experience as a journalist and PR professional. Communication audit involves several pieces, along with the survey. It includes a review and analysis of current communication programs. That's our publications, print and electronic, social media, our video, our marketing materials, website, policies, procedures, marketing engagement plans, media coverage, staffing, and job descriptions for our office. We're collecting all that material now, and we'll be sending that to the auditors in a few weeks, and they will review all that before they come in March. But the core component is what they do when they are here in March, which is the focus groups. And that is listening to our key internal and external stakeholders, hear from a variety of voices, providing a balanced perspective. Broad representation of the staff and the community are represented in the focus groups. They meet with each group for about 50 to 60 minutes, and they're going to meet with a total of 20 groups. And each group has anywhere from around eight to 12 participants is your goal. And if you can get more, that's great. They ask questions that probe into the participants' perceptions about our district and determine specific communication needs and issues. They report their responses anonymously in the final report, so that they can create an environment where they feel comfortable providing open and honest opinions. They obtain more in-depth information than a formal survey done by filling out a form, and often help us identify communication issues that might otherwise be overlooked. After their visit in March, auditors prepare a comprehensive report that includes key findings and observations, summaries of focus group responses, and a set of recommendations that serve as that framework for developing the comprehensive communication plan. So that I wanted to give everybody a heads up on, because I said we'll be having those individuals come in March, and we'll be soon reaching out to a lot of different people to hopefully volunteer to participate in those focus groups. I'm glad answering questions.
Questions, comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Manning?
Just quickly, I'm very excited about this. I think this is an area where I know a number of us have talked to you about this particular topic, and definitely appreciate the work you guys are doing already. Just very excited about where this is going to take us. So thank you.
Other questions, comments on the board?
How do we determine the participants of the focus groups?
We will ask our principals to help us. We will use our advisory councils that are existence. We've been working on a key contact database since, came on board back in February. A lot of those databases, individual lists exist. They are now housed in one big database of about five, close to 500 key contacts, and that will be where we start. And we will also send out, one of the ways is tonight, talking about it, so that people know we're doing it. If they're interested, they can get in touch with me. My contact information is all over the website and on emails. And so if people are interested in the focus groups, this is just a brief list. The auditors help us identify a final list of the 20 different groups.
Other questions, comments on the board? I would imagine that Midlands Technical College probably did something similar to this before it rebranded itself, and the rebranding is absolutely outstanding. I mean, and I'm looking forward, excitedly looking forward to what this is going to bring for us as a district, so.
I have about 15 years in school PR, and this is the first time that I can say I really do everything that they taught me I'm supposed to do in graduate school, which is base what you do on research. And this is going to provide us with invaluable research. I'm very excited, and I believe my staff, our staff is as well.
Other questions, comments on the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, agenda items for our next board meeting, which will be held Feb. Next on our agenda is agenda items for our next board meeting, which will be held February 10th at Polo Road Elementary School. Dr. Ham?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, remind the board that we will have a 5:00 PM workshop on our expanded choice of magnet options. If you'd like to avail yourself of that, you are invited to do that. And then the items that are specific will be on the agenda are faculty focus, approval of our 8% funding, an update on R2I2, and then an update on the district priority we had for leadership, management, and supervision. That's another one of those progress reports on the work of that group. And then the last thing I have added, since we heard the presentation on the bond refunding, is to add the bond refunding resolution for action this time.
Are there any other additional items that board members would like to add to the next board agenda or future board agenda? Okay. Ms. Manning?
Mr. Chair, just, I think, quick update, just a high level of our students that went down a letter grade. I think we were gonna get some sort of report on that. That doesn't have to be in super detail, but at least a high level, just to let us know the direction that we're going to, make sure that our schools are addressing the issues, if they dropped a letter grade.
Want to note that.
Other items requested from the board? Okay, here in, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our public participation part two. Anyone that signed up for this session as well, however, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, you may feel free to come forth and do so at this time. Thank you. And last but not least, would be our board and superintendent comments. I'll start with you, Mr. Plank.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank everybody for the attention that's been given us as a board tonight. Really appreciate it. Love the service of our principals and educators and administrators for our meal tonight. That was very special, appreciated that. You know, I loved, one quote I pulled, and I love quotes, and I pulled one from the student focus, that says, "You don't have to have harmony by, you don't have harmony by having everyone sing the same, singing the same note." And that just stuck with me as we talk about the varying projects that are out there, different schools, different funding. It seems tremendously complex, and I want to just say that I thankful to our administrators for doing an excellent job and seeking what's best for the community, what's best for our teachers, and ultimately what's best for our students. So I really appreciate that, and I feel like we're in very capable and competent hands, and thank you for your leadership in that. And the fiscal responsibility, I really appreciate looking at that with discerning eyes and managing that with the taxpayer in mind as well. And finally, the marketing. I mean, we saw the Columbia Airport say, come out with, you know, when you're home, you're home. And I have to admit, my flights out of Charlotte have been more in Columbia. So that rebranding's really cool, and I look forward to, you know, being someone in my own business, I know how important that is. We seek excellence in this district, and it would be neat to have people know that, to attract more businesses, to people moving into the area to select this as their premier choice, and ultimately competent and excellent educators, and that's what we're trying to seek. So I'm really looking forward to that as well. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Plank. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, first, I'd like to say thank you to Beth Elliott and her team. We really appreciate the morning show. You guys did a fabulous job, so thank you for that. Also, a few weeks ago, I had an opportunity to go to the SCAPC conference, and I went to one of the workshops for cursive handwriting, and I had an opportunity to also go visit some schools. And what I've noticed, and more so for you, Dr. Ham, that back on June 13th, 2014, the law passed that we must teach cursive handwriting in our third-grade classes and spend about 10 to 15 minutes. So I want to make sure that you are encouraging our teachers to do that, because teachers, especially our third-grade teachers, I'm going to be watching. I'm coming through, because I think we took it out many years ago. But there is a law now that went into effect on June 13th, 2014, and it is mandated third-grade teachers that you teach cursive writing. So principals, my elementary principals, if you're here this evening, please make sure and encourage your teachers to go back and do that. We have so many high school students that cannot write their name in cursive, including my niece, because it was taken out for so long, so we need to make sure that we incorporate that. Also, I had an opportunity to be the keynote speaker at Ridgeview High School over the weekend, and I must say, hats off to Dr. Mac Foxworth and Mrs. Stephanie McKinney for sending a need in their school, a need for mentoring our young ladies, because we all know that it takes a village to raise a child, and they need that. A lot of times, our students don't have it at home, or sometimes they do. But I think as a school, we must make sure that we provide it as well. So hats off to Dr. Mac Foxworth and Mrs. Stephanie McKinney for sending a need in Ridgeview and taking the lead to start that girls mentoring program. So if the other high schools have not done so, please do that. It's so important that we start that mentoring program for our young people, and not only high school. We can start it as early as the elementary schools, because we do need that. And also, I want to say congratulations to our National Board certified teachers. Thank you so much for your hard work, your dedication, and your ability to lead and be a lifelong learner. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Ms. Brill?
Well, I can say ditto. You did a good job. And just wanted to thank Beth Elliott again for your hospitality, and the school looks fabulous, and your kids look like they are so sharp, and the ones that greeted us at the doors and walked us in. It's just a wonderful experience here. So appreciate all that you're doing and all that your staff has been doing too, and extremely grateful for the nice meal tonight and being served by principals with berets on. Appreciate the work of our staff to get all that together, and I'm greatly humbled and honored to be honored. We don't do it to do that. We do it because we love it, and we love being part of the system and trying to help people and making a difference, but I'm extremely grateful. So thank you all for doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Ms. Manning?
Mr. Chair, again, thank you to everybody. I think the staff in this district make our jobs much easier as board members, and so we really appreciate each and every one of you and your role in the district. Doesn't matter what you do, drive a bus, principal, whatever, everybody's very important to the process, and so thank you. Beth Elliott, fantastic school. I really applaud you for the work that's being done here. Great leadership, the IB framework together is just a winning formula. We've seen that each one of our schools, R&amp;E, EL Wright with IB, saying the Pledge of Allegiance in a foreign language, you know, is just real reflection on what many of our English as a second language learners deal with every day, and really drives home my constant push for foreign language in elementary schools. Again, another budget priority for me. And I also want to apologize ahead of time. We going into the budget process, and, you know, we talked about harmony. This is always a tough time of year, as we work together as board members, between district, lot of questioning, limited resources, and so if I step on your toes in the process, it's not personal, it's just part of the process to get us where we're going, what we need to do. So thank you for allowing me to go ahead and just get that out upfront, so I can go forward without hesitation. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that for us, Mr. Manning. Ms. Mackey?
Ditto. There's not much to repeat. Ditto. Thank you all for being so gracious in your recognitions. We are here to serve you. There's a lot of policymaking and decisions that we make, but we're public servants, the board members are public servants, and we're here to advocate for your behalf as well. So thank you for your courtesy and all that you bestowed upon us tonight. We appreciate it very much. Personal note, not a personal note, but I saw the video of the Richland Northeast student, I don't know if everyone here has seen that, Javier, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing his name, Moreno, I believe, the student who was impacted with homelessness. It was a heart-wrenching and heartwarming story, but it's great to know that we have in this community a support system that would lend itself to lift a student up and to R&amp;E, this student that we have schools that would support, our students both inside and outside the classroom. It just echoes everything, I believe, about the community, community coming together. So hats off to you all and keeping our prayers. That was just an amazing story that was in the state newspaper yesterday, I believe. So keep up the good work with what you're doing, and being communities and schools, literally and figuratively.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Carson Parker?
Congratulations to all the teachers recognized this evening, the National Board and teachers of the year received awards. It was a wonderful student focus. It was just great. Thank you, Beth. Where are you, Beth?
There.
Thank you. And also thank all of you for all the board appreciation activities this evening. It's deeply appreciated.
Thank you. Dr. Ham?
Well, I too want to congratulate Windsor and say thank you for what your students did with that Windsor Wildcat broadcast. It was fabulous. Your kids are great, the ones who greeted us, and I just thought they were such, such natural talents up there on stage, so that was lots of fun. Congratulations to all of our National Board certified teachers. It's wonderful to be a leader in what we do, and again, to commend our board for the support that they've always given to National Board certification. I do believe it rewards and attracts great teachers to Richland School District too. So thank you and congratulations to those teachers. We also congratulate our new Teachers of the Year. Our schools have completed the process of selecting the Teachers of the Year for the upcoming year, and it'll be exciting to see them complete their portfolios and compete to be the District Teacher of the Year. That's always somebody really spectacular, so we'll look forward to hearing that announcement. And it was fun to be at programs and see these people announced and how excited their fellow faculty members were to see them named Teacher of the Year, and how excited their students were to see them named Teacher of the Year. Next week, we're going to do something new in the district. We're going to have a shadowing Groundhog's Day. The day after Groundhog's Day, which is when our students often shadow somebody, we are gonna have teams of administrators, teachers, and staff actually follow a student and be a student the next day, and find out what it's like to spend an entire school day going through the kinds of things that our kids experience during the day. And I think it'll be really interesting to see school life from a student's perspective. I'm looking forward to it. So we're gonna do that and then have a debriefing, and I think it's gonna be really interesting to find out what it's like to be in our classrooms. It'll be an exciting and fun day. So that's something new for us. And then, last but not least, I am going to close on a, the note of one of our student athletes. And I know we have a number of athletes who have accomplished a number of things, but Spring Valley senior guard PJ Dozier reached an important milestone last week. He reached 1,000 points in his career after he made a three-point bucket, and he was printed with a special, presented with a special basketball to commemorate that milestone, and Spring Valley went on to beat Dutch Forks 75 to 49. Thousand points, that's great.
Thank you, Dr. Ham. USC desperately needs some outside shooting, I can tell you. It was 2008, and it was in September of 2008, and I was, I had made the decision to run for the school board, and that particular day, it was probably about 95 or 96 degrees, and I had been visiting the school grounds and other places in this district, and had not necessarily received the warmest reception at some of the places I visited. Mixed messages regarding whether I could be on the grounds as a candidate or not, where I could stand, where I couldn't stand. But this particular day, I went to Pontiac Elementary School, and I was out there, it was hot, it was humid, and I was out there smiling and shaking hands and greeting parents as they were coming and going. And they were having a parent meeting that night in Pontiac Elementary School in the cafeteria. It was spaghetti supper. And the principal of that school, Beth Elliott, came outside, introduced herself to me, saw how I was sweating profusely, and brought me a bottle of water, invited me to come inside the building, and I was hesitant because I'd had some really negative experiences prior to that, and didn't know she was setting me up. But she was genuinely, genuinely kind and welcoming and inviting to allow me to come into that building and to refresh myself and be able to speak to parents as they entered. I will never forget that experience, because it meant so much to me then and to this day. And so, Ms. Elliott knows this, she has a very special place in my heart. She does an outstanding job as a professional, but I just simply wanted to say that she went out of her way to show kindness to a person that she didn't really know. Want to congratulate one of our very own, Board Member, the Honorable Amelia Mackey, who has been selected one of 38 individuals to participate in the Raleigh Institute at Furman Diversity Leaders Initiative Eighth Class. This is a program that has replaced what used to be the Leadership Institute that was run by the Budget and Control Board, and now being done out of Furman by the Raleigh Institute, and so we're very honored and excited that she's going to have the privilege of being a part of that. And for those that are not aware of this progress, this process, this is a very grueling process that she will go through for the next year, being all over the state and studying in depth, having conversations and discussions, in-depth conversations and discussions about issues pertinent to not only just education, but the economy, the environment, government as well. And so we are excited and honored to have her represent, not only herself, but represent this board and this district in such a magnificent way. That's all I have to say. If there are any other questions or comments, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Brill?
Second.
Mr. Manning? Thank you very much. Folks, have a good night.[1794.83]